...organizational meeting, January 4th, 2024. I will be serving as the president pro temp for this meeting. I would like to call the January 4th organizational meeting to order. This meeting is a meeting of the Board of Education and Public for the purpose of conducting the school district's business, and it's not to be considered a public community meeting. Please join me for the pledge and allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, we will swear in our new board members.
Could you raise your right hand, please?
I.
I, Deion Simmons.
Do solemnly swear.
Sowohl and fair.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution of.
The Constitution of.
The United States.
The United States.
And the Constitution.
And the Constitution.
Of the State of Ohio.
Of the State of Ohio.
And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
And impartially.
And impartially.
Discharge my duties.
Discharge my duties.
As a member of.
As a member of.
The Board of Education.
The Board of Education.
And in force.
And in force.
The said.
The said.
Trotwood Madison City School District.
Trotwood Madison City School District.
Montgomery County, Ohio.
Montgomery County, Ohio.
To the best of my abilities.
To the best of my abilities.
And in accordance with.
And in accordance with.
Laws now in effect.
Laws now in effect.
And hereafter.
And hereafter.
To be in active.
To be in active.
During my continuance.
During my continuance.
In said office.
In said office.
And until my successor.
And until my successor.
Is chosen and qualified.
Is chosen and qualified.
Sworn to and subscribed before the fourth day of January 2024, Janice Neola, Treasurer, CFO, Trotwood Madison City School District.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Now that our new board members have been sworn in, I need a motion to adopt the agenda.
Excuse me, roll call.
Oh, I'm sorry, roll call. Roll call of the board members, I'm sorry.
Mr. Lumpkin.
Here.
Ms. Simmons.
Here.
Mr. Davis.
Here, yes.
And Mrs. Cherry.
Yes. Now, I need a motion to the, to adopt the, the agenda.
I'll make a motion to adopt the agenda.
I'll second their motion.
It's been. Okay. Ms. Allen, would you please call the row?
Yes, Ms. Simmons.
Yes.
Mr. Lumpkin.
Yes.
Mr. Davis.
Yes.
And Mrs. Cherry.
Yes. The agenda has been adopted as presented. Now, we will have the election of officers. The nomination for the Board of Education President is open.
I'd like to nominate Madam Cherry.
Are there any other nominations?
Any other?
Are there any other nominations?
No.
No.
Well, then I'll call for the vote for the Board President.
Mr. Lumpkin?
Yes.
Ms. Simmons?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
And Mrs. Cherry?
Yes. I guess I am now the Board President. Congratulations.
This is the new board members and to Mrs. Cherry.
I would like to swear you in.
Okay.
As for Board President, please.
I am Stacey Smith.
I am Cherry.
Do solemnly swear that I will support, that I will support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the United States, and the Constitution of the State of Ohio, and that I will faithfully, and that I will faithfully, and impartially discharge my duties as President of the Board of Education, and in force, and in force, the said, the said, Trotwood Madison City School District, Trotwood Madison City School District, Montgomery County, Ohio, Montgomery County, Ohio, to the best of my abilities, to the best of my abilities, and in accordance with, and in accordance with, laws now in effect, laws now in effect, and hereafter, and hereafter, to be in active, to be in active, during my continuance, during my continuance, in said office, in said office, and until my successor, and until my successor is chosen and qualified, is chosen and qualified, sworn to and subscribed before me this fourth day of January 2024, Janice Neola, Treasurer, CFO, Trotwood Madison City School District.
Ooh. Okay, now nominations are open for the Board of Education Vice President.
I nominate Deion Simmons. I nominate myself.
Simmons, Davis. So, all those in favor of Deion Simmons as Vice President, please signify by raising your hand. So, has anyone, no, it's a bill, yeah, unanimous.
So, that was a unanimous vote?
It was unanimous?
Yes.
Yes, that was a unanimous vote.
To, to the next one.
Yes, ma'am.
So, Ms. Simmons, would you come, please?
And I can swear you in as Vice President.
I'm Stacey.
Hi.
Deion Simmons. Do solemnly swear, sowohl and fair, that I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution.
And the Constitution.
Of the State of Ohio.
Of the State of Ohio.
And that I will faithfully.
And I will faithfully, and impartially, and impartially discharge my duties.
Discharge my duties.
As Vice President.
As Vice President, as the Board of Education.
The Board of Education.
And in force, and in force, the said.
The said.
Trotwood Madison City School District, Trotwood Madison City School District, Montgomery County, Ohio.
Montgomery County, Ohio.
To the best of my abilities.
To the best of my abilities.
And in accordance with.
And in accordance with.
Laws now in effect.
Laws now in effect.
And hereafter, and hereafter, to be in active, to be in active, during my continuance.
During my continuance.
In said office.
In said office.
And until my successor.
And until my successor.
Is chosen and qualified.
Is chosen and qualified.
Sworn to and subscribed before me this fourth day of January 2024, Janice Neola, Treasurer, CFO, Trotwood Madison City School District. And congratulations.
Can I just do a reminder to our new board members that when you're looking on your board docs and you see that little page next to item A for number three, for example, if you click on that, it will show you what it says. Ms. Cherry can also explain it, but just if you wanted to actually see the document. So, Ms. Cherry. Charge is to my head and not my heart, this is my first time, and I'm navigating through things.
You're doing great.
Okay, so now, we're on to organizational business, item A. The time and the location of our meetings remain the same. The second changes in dates are, there will be one meeting in July due to the holiday. That meeting will be July the 17th. And the second change is the January meeting will be the second and the fourth Thursday instead of the first and the third Thursday due to New Year's holiday. Can I get a motion on the board calendar?
I motion.
I second.
It's been moved in second, are there any questions?
No.
Ms. Allen, would you please call the row?
Yes, Mr. Lumpkin.
Yes.
Ms. Simmons?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
And Mrs. Cherry.
Yes. Item B is a resolution to establish a service fund for the Board of Education in the amount of $20,000. I need a motion.
I motion.
I'll second.
Ms. Simmons, do you second this?
Yes. It has been properly moved in second, are there any questions?
No, you're fine, brother. Explain what this, what the service fund is.
Service fund is basically your budget, and basically, not basically, but all of the expenses for your professional development is paid out of that, and we just call it a service fund.
How do we, how do we come to the amount of the $20,000, or is that?
That's a great question, I've been here 13 years, and that's the amount that has, has, has been. So, we've, we've tried to stay within the $20,000 budget line.
So, the only reason why is just, that's just because we've done it, there's no other?
Not the only reason why, but it has been $20,000, and it's state, it is within the budget, budgetary guidelines that we establish for the board.
Okay.
And, and like I said, the $20,000 is related to the professional development, and that pays for the board members going to different various conferences, like the Ohio School Board Association, the National School Board Association, National Association of Black School Educators, or any other conferences and or professional meetings that you would like to, to attend.
Okay.
And I think we've stayed within that amount.
Yes, and we've stayed within that amount, yes.
Okay.
Any other questions? Ms. Allen, would you please call the row?
Yes, Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Ms. Simmons?
Yes.
Mr. Lumpkin?
Yes.
And Mrs. Cherry?
Yes. Motion passes. Item C is to adopt a standing authorization for the 2024 calendar year. I need a motion.
I motion. I second.
It's been moved in second. Ms. Allen, would you call the row?
Yes. Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Lumpkin?
Yes.
Ms. Simmons?
Yes.
And Mrs. Cherry?
Yes. Motion passes. Item D is to renew membership to the Ohio School Boards Association Legal Assistance Fund for the period of January 1st, 2024 through December 31st, 2024. I do need a motion?
I'll make the motion for it to be accepted.
I second that as stated.
It's been properly moved in second, Ms. Allen, would you please call the row?
Ms. Simmons?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Lumpkin?
Yes.
And Mrs. Cherry?
Yes. Motion passes. Item E, to renew the membership to the Ohio School Boards Association for the period of January 1st, 2024 through December 31st, 2024. I do need a motion?
I motion.
I second.
It's been properly moved in second, Ms. Allen, would you please call the row?
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Ms. Simmons?
Yes.
Mr. Lumpkin?
Yes.
And Mrs. Cherry?
Yes. Motion passes. Okay? Item M is to renew the membership to the National School Boards Association for the period of January 1st, 2024 through December 31st, 2024. I need a motion.
I make the motion that it be accepted.
I second.
It's been properly moved in second, Ms. Allen, would you please call the row?
Ms. Simmons?
Yes.
Mr. Lumpkin?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
And Mrs. Cherry?
Yes, motion passes. Next item, the Board Committee Liaison Appointments. So, I will go through each one of those, one of, all of these board committees, and we can take, well, not take a vote. Yes, whoever's interested in taking a position on the committee. The first one is the City of Trotwood. We need two liaisons for this committee. I was one of the ones that was on the committee, and I will take a volunteer for someone else.
I'll volunteer, I'll volunteer to go on there.
So, is Ms. Cherry, Mr. Lumpkin?
Yes.
Okay. The next one is the District Leadership Team. They have regular meetings that are held the first Monday of each month at 6:30, no, that's for the city council.
No, yeah, yeah. DLT, they're held during the school day.
Yes.
Either from 9:00 to 12:00 or 12:00 to 3:00 monthly. Mr. Davis has served on that committee before, I'm not sure.
I am Ms. Jeter Freeman.
District Leadership, every once, twice a month?
Is it twice a month?
Yes.
Are you gonna stay sitting? You gonna stay there?
It depends, I gotta itch to jump out there with educators, and if not, I will, but if not, alright, I'll volunteer.
Would you like to remain on there?
I'll stay on it.
Mr. Davis and Mr. Lumpkin?
Yeah, you need two, buddy.
Let, let me call.
Well, just remember, there will be a new board member.
Yeah, right.
At some point as well.
Absolutely.
So, they may want that opportunity if nobody else is, Mr. Davis, if you're on there, there is an opportunity for one more if there's new person.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
I have a question, though. Procedurally, do we have to appoint two people today? Is the, is the question today?
I don't think so, no.
Because we still have an opening.
So, Mr. Davis will remain, and then we will have an opening.
One open.
The next one is the Finance Committee, and the Finance Committee usually meets the Thurs- Thursday at 4:30, from 4:30 to 5:30. I currently sit on the Finance Committee, and Mr. Davis sits on the Finance Committee. Mr. Davis, would you like to continue?
Yes.
I would like to continue on that. I would. Well, Ms. Deion would like to sit on it.
So, are you gonna, you staying on?
No, you can't.
So, we have Mr. Mr. Davis, would you like to remain on?
Yes, ma'am.
So, we have Mr. Davis. And Mrs. Simmons. The next one is the Miami Valley CTC Board of Education. I currently sit on that committee, and I would like to remain on that committee. Alright, the next one is the National Alliance of Black School Educators.
Basically, that is a conference that we go to, and, and anyone that wants to go can go, but sometimes they'll hold a meeting, and, and if you are the person who signed up, you know, you may go to that meeting as part of the conference, but it's not a separate thing where you attend.
So, Sydney, are you gonna currently stay?
I wasn't ever on it.
Oh, it says, no.
Well, no, I was on it, but I, I never got to hang out too much with them, but yes, I would like to stay.
Stay, okay.
Yes.
It sounds like you wanna be around with me?
Yeah.
One or two people?
Sydney and myself. The next one is the National School Boards Association Liaison. So, Sydney Davis was on that committee. I want to refer to the superintendent to give us a little.
Right, this, this is very similar to the one that I just mentioned before, except this is our, did we do, we did Black School Educators first, this is National School Board Association, so it's all the school boards, when we meet at a national level, again, there may be a pullout, but anybody can attend that meeting.
Okay.
And I don't know, if COVID has stopped anything that may have happened prior to now, but at this point, there, there have not been any other meetings beyond going to the conference, and they may call a meeting for liaisons.
Really, if people wanna kinda get my view of it for three seconds, it's kind of like a, a good way to brag about what you've done that year, and, like, when I always go, it might be like six, 608 districts there, and nobody got nothing to say when it's time to talk about sports, 'cause they know, out of 608 schools, we it, other than Shaminad and maybe some of the altars and them, so we get to kinda, kinda be quite, you know, throw our little weight around, and then also, when we do our growing program for the people that grow food, grow greens, collards, whatever, if you got a green thumb, we really get to shine with our youth program there, so it, it really is a, a good way to get to know other schools and just get your feet wet with different things, and then a lot of vendors come to sell us things, I'm, I'm just being honest, they sell us stuff, they try to get you to lobby for things, and great ideas, sorry about that, President wants me to cry, I'm sorry.
No, I'm just, we gotta move forward for good.
Alright, I'm sorry.
So, would you like to sit on there?
Yeah, I wouldn't did that for nothing, I'm sorry.
So, Sydney would like to remain on there, is, is there one or two individuals that could sit on there?
I think it's two, because you always like to have a delegate at all, so you always have two.
Do we have a delegate? Alright, well. The next one is.
I'm sorry, did, was the second person?
Deion.
I'm sorry, I didn't, I didn't get that.
Item G is the NSBA, the Black Caucus. So, I think this is known, the, the Q holds a conference, and any board member can join and attend the conference?
Yes, on the state level.
Ms. Deion said she's interested.
Okay.
The next one is the Ohio School Boards Association, letter, letter state of liaison.
Again, a lot of these things have not returned after COVID, I mean, we used to go up to Columbus and they would hold a meeting, and, you know, it was, it was more like this. Now, they do send out legislative information that you will receive in your email, and the opportunity would be to bring some of that information to your board meeting and share it in that way, but it doesn't really mean going anywhere.
Okay.
I'll, I'll sit on.
Mr. Lumpkin, would you like to sit on there?
Yeah, that's, sure.
I'm sorry, I thought you raised your hand, you did not.
No, I scratched my head.
Oh, I'm sorry. Are we ready? Okay, the next one is OSBA, the Southwest Region. And, is that so?
Ms. Cherry, I'm sorry, whi- which one, where are you?
I, right.
Item I.
Student Achievement.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Student Achievement Leadership.
I'm sorry.
Oh, yeah, that's me, I'm sorry, yes, student leaders, Student Achievement Leadership Team. And I already currently sit on there, is there anyone else that would like to volunteer?
I will.
The next one, J is, item J is the OSBA Urban School District Advisory Network Committee.
Now, that's usually, that's usually like a meeting, but they haven't had it for a while, but that's usually a meeting in Columbus, and the superintendent and myself attend along with two other board members, but a lot of times, they haven't had it recently, but when they do have it, it would be nice to have two board members to attend.
I'll, I'll serve on that.
So, Mr. Lumpkin?
We have Mr. Lumpkin.
And me, y'all looking at me, I might as well do it, damn, when I'm daydreaming, I do it.
So, we have Mr. Lumpkin and Mr. Davis.
Okay.
Item K, the Policy Committee.
Um, the Policy Committee, we meet about quarterly, we meet with Neola, that's the organization that helps us, you know, with their policies, they update them and everything, and then that information is brought back to the board, so it's like a, a virtual meeting. So, much has changed due to COVID, that used to be in person. Okay, Mr. Lumpkin has said he would like to do that one, and we have two people typically sit on that.
I also like to sta- sit on that with him.
Okay, Mr. Davis.
Okay. Item L is the Trotwood Community Improvement Cooperation.
That is the CIC, okay? Yeah, you all probably are familiar with that, they're doing the development in our community, okay, Mr. Lumpkin has said he'd be interested?
Yes.
Are you something? I will.
You too.
Okay.
I'm missing.
Okay. Item M is the Trotwood Madison Educational Foundation. And do they still meet every, the last Thursday at 7:00?
Yes.
So, Mr. Davis was currently on that committee?
I might like to stay on there.
Okay. Do we need to alter? Do we need an alternate?
Would you like an alternate?
I believe so.
Okay, does anybody like to?
Item N is the Triwood Madison Parent Engagement Liaison. And I do currently sit on that one committee. And I would like to join.
Do you agree that?
Yes. Item O, the Community Engagement Liaison. Mr. Lumpkin?
And that one, we're still sort of fleshing out, Mr. Lumpkin, it was abroad about recently. Yeah, and so, you know, so we'll see what that turns out.
Yeah, we're wrong with it. I'm sorry about what we're saying.
Do we need to have an alternate?
That's, that's up to you guys. Mr. Lumpkin, would you like to have an alternate in the event you can't?
Yes, it should all be.
Okay.
That will be all for the organizational meeting. This concludes our committees and are there any questions? Okay. So I need a motion to adjourn. I'll make the motion to adjourn.
I second.
It's been properly moved. Ms. Alice, Ms. Allen, could you please call the row?
Did Mr. Davis second?
No.
Ms. Simmons?
Yes.
Mr. Lumpkin?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
And Mrs. Cherry?
Yes.
Congratulations, Ms. Cherry, you did an excellent job in your first meeting.
Now, we will do a five-minute recess. So we have Mr. Lumpkin and Mr. Davis. Item K, the Policy Committee. So I need a motion to adjourn. I'll make the motion to adjourn.
I second.
It's been properly moved. Ms. Allen, could you please call the row?
Did Mr. Davis second?
No.
Ms. Simmons?
Yes.
Mr. Lumpkin?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
And Mrs. Cherry?
Yes.
Congratulations, Ms. Cherry, you did an excellent job in your first meeting.
Now, we will do a five-minute recess. So that first one is a retreat discussion. So that first one is a retreat discussion. So that first one is a retreat discussion. So that first one is a retreat discussion.
You've got to give me the thing. Charlie Simmons.
Charlie Simmons.
Charlie Simmons.
I'll see it.
Oh, okay.
Good evening and welcome back. It is now time for the Thursday, January fourth, twenty twenty-four work session. Ms. Allen, would you please call the row?
Yes, Mr. Lumpkin? Ms. Simmons?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
And Mrs. Cherry?
Yes. I'm sorry, do we stand again for the pledge allegiance? Do we stand for the pledge allegiance? We will now have the mission statement read by Charlie Simmons.
The mission of the Triwood Madison City Schools is to graduate all students prepared to excel in a global society with a commitment to lifelong learning by guaranteeing a challenging curriculum facilitated by an innovative and dedicated staff. Community participation and state-of-the-art resources in a stimulating atmosphere. This meeting is a meeting of the Board of Education in public for the purpose of conducting the school district's business and is not to be considered a public community meeting.
Thank you.
Good job.
Good job.
Thank you, Mr. Senior Charlie Simmons. Okay, I will now need a motion to adopt the agenda. I'll make the motion to adopt, to adopt the agenda.
I second that is stated.
It's been properly, properly moved and second. Are there any changes to the agenda?
No.
Ms. Allen, would you please call the row?
Yes, Ms. Simmons?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Lumpkin?
Yes.
And Mrs. Cherry?
Yes, motion passes. Are there any presentations?
Yes, I have a presentation. This is School Board Appreciation Month, and so every year, we take January to be the month that we show our appreciation for our school board. And I know that we have new school board members as well as our school board members who've been with us for two years and who've served us diligently. But we are very optimistic that our new board members will do the same, so I have certificates for everyone. I will read what it says on our certificate. So Certificate of Appreciation, this certificate is presented to, and this is Mr. Lumpkin's, Triwood Madison City Schools in sincere appreciation for exemplary leadership and service to the public schools. Says launching our next generation, and you'll see we also have a poster up for launching our next generation, so I will pass these out to you. Again, thank you so much.
Thank you.
For your willingness to work for us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you mind we take a minute and stand together and show these?
Sure.
Ms. Allen, we're going to all stand together and take a picture.
Okay.
So everybody, how proud we are of our school board members. Yeah, you're going to get this picture for us, Ms. Ella? Thank you, thank you.
And thank you all.
Thank you.
This is truly a service-oriented job. It's not like it's something that people get paid an extreme amount to participate in, and it takes up quite a bit of time. So we sincerely thank you.
Thank you, Madam Superintendent.
All right, next up, Treasures Report.
Yes, I just had one item today for information only. It's the approval of the minutes for December seventh, twenty twenty-three work session, the December thirteenth, twenty twenty-three board retreat, and December twenty-first regular board meeting. And again, that was just for information.
Okay, so do I need a motion for that?
No, it's just for information.
Item four, Superintendent's Report.
And my reports also are for information. A, under my report is approval of next school year's calendar, and what I wanted to do is take the opportunity to tell you how we develop the school year calendar. The negotiated agreement says that we will meet with, and we being administration and our union leadership, and we will develop three calendars, and then we will have those calendars voted on by our staff. So that will all take place, we've actually developed some draft ones that will all take place before our next meeting, because we will be voting on the calendar. And I will get that to you prior to the meeting, so you'll have a chance to look over. And then item B is approval of the personnel agenda, and we will not have any personnel agenda today. If we have any urgent needs that come up, then I will do just a prior agreement approved of them until the next board meeting, in which time you will get a chance to vote on. That's all I have.
Great, thank you. Number five, any discussion, follow-up items?
So that first one is a retreat discussion. School districts do retreats in different ways, and we sort of wanted to take this opportunity to sort of think about the purpose of retreats, and of course, that's to give data and information to the board and to the community, because those meetings are open to everyone. As far as the number that are needed, at this school year, we know that our strategic plan needs to be reviewed or looked at again, the mission statement, our goals, those things. So I believe that we should probably plan for one, probably this spring, so that we can, you know, just move forward with that. Also, that may give us an opportunity for you to learn what my different department heads do at that meeting. Then we would like to have one. Then we would like to have one either near the end of the year or early summer when our scores come back from all the testing, so we can go over that data. And then we would potentially hold one at the beginning of the school year again to see where we are and where we're going. So again, we can always add one, always take it away if we realize we don't need it. But I think for you to start thinking about a time in the spring, and then near the end of the year, and as we move into the beginning of next year.
And we don't have dates yet for those? No?
No.
Okay.
What I would like to do, sort of get with you all to see, are these meetings that you would like to hold after meeting, or early Saturday, after-day type meeting? And get some dates out to you.
Do you also share the results from the Ohio Light Schools Committee that was here in November? Do you share those results in those retreats?
Yes, we are going to share those results. Actually, that is to happen very soon. Right now, my Director of Curriculum is out of town. She has something serious going on. But we're prepared to do that. Anybody else have anything you'd like to say about the retreat, or anything like that before I move on? Okay. And then B is the new board member selection process, and Ms. Allen is going to share that with you.
So we have thirty days from the time, we have a vacancy, and that vacancy did start on January first, and so we have until the end of the month to fill that vacancy. And so on, if you go on OSBA website, they have a whole list of what we should do first and second and third. The first thing that we need to do, and generally I do these things, is to submit a press release. And the press release will state the vacancy is out there, and when the potential, well, it will state that the vacancies is made, and then where you can get an application. And normally, those applications come to the treasurer or the board secretary, so to speak. And then you guys will decide on the dates that you will hold then the interviews.
So question, has the press release been sent out already?
It has not. I did not send that out because I wanted to make sure that we had a board, and I didn't do anything until you guys said Janice.
Okay.
So I did not. So I will, I can work on that tomorrow and send that out tomorrow.
I was just, my next question.
I can send that out tomorrow. And then in terms of what would be the deadline for it to be back? Normally, it's a week. So by sending out Friday, would you all want the applications to be forwarded back to me by next Friday? Would that be fine?
Yes.
And then, then you guys can decide on the dates.
For interviews.
So we're not going to have a meeting until January the?
Seventeenth.
On the eighteenth?
Eighteenth.
January eighteenth, so we can decide then, I guess, for that next week?
Yes. The week after the eighteenth?
Is that, would that be fine?
The week after the eighteenth.
I think that they should start the month, the week right after that the applications are due.
Speak up, Mr. Lumpkin.
I said, I think that the review, the process of the interview should start the week after the Friday deadline. So if the Fri-, if we're sending out tomorrow, the next Friday is the deadline for people to turn the paperwork in? I think that, right after. Right after Martin Luther King Day, would be the sixteenth. I think that they should start at some point that week. Yes.
Okay. So the twelfth, the applications will be due. And then what did you say, Mr. Lumpkin?
So once the press release goes out.
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow, the twelfth is the deadline for them to have that back. I think that we should start the interview process that following week.
The week of the fifteenth.
The week of the fifteenth.
The week of the fifteenth.
Yes.
And I've done this several times, and as I remember, that the interviews, I think you guys interviewed all of the candidates. And normally, it's not more than four or five, but you guys interviewed all of the candidates at the same night. And generally, you picked the candidates that night after the interview. So it's up to you all how you all want to run it, but generally, I'm not sure how many we'll have, but potentially, you could use one night and select the candidate.
So do you guys want to decide what that night's going to be now, so that?
Well, doesn't it depend on the candidate's availability?
Yeah.
And I said the week of January sixteenth, because Monday obviously is a holiday.
Right.
Okay.
And then the eighteenth is the next board meeting.
Yes, and the eighteenth is the board meeting.
Do we want to do it the day before? The seventeenth?
Seventeenth.
The seventeenth.
So interviews would be held on Wednesday?
Yes, January seventeenth.
Now we need a time. A time? Five thirty? Beginning at five thirty?
Five, one, two, five, I got thirty-minute increments. So five, five thirty, six, or six thirty? So can we agree on the time of five o'clock, January seventeenth?
Five o'clock?
Yes.
Okay, so I just want to make sure I'm have it all correct. The press release will go out tomorrow.
Yes.
And included in the press release will indicate that the applications are due on Friday, January twelfth, and that the interviews will be held on Wednesday, January seventeenth, beginning at five o'clock.
Yes.
Okay? Okey-dokey. All right. And that's all I have.
Okay. Well, next up, Treasures Comments.
Well, the comment I would like to make is I just want to welcome Mr. Lumpkin and Ms. Simmons to the board, and I look forward to working with you guys. And my door is always open. You can get me on my phone if you can't get me in my office, and we'll go from there. But I'm looking forward to a great twenty twenty-four. Likewise.
All right, item seven, Superintendent Comments.
Okay, I will say ditto to that. Looking forward to working with our new board members and to also working with our current board members again. Congratulations.
Sorry about that.
She says she can't handle it. And congratulations to our new president and vice president. You're going to be busy, I'm sure, but it'll be all worth it. Also, I would like to, you know, because the holiday season sort of got biased, I hope everyone here had a great holiday, a safe holiday. Glad that we are all back together. Prior to going on vacation, I did attend some great holiday concerts, and just wanted to acknowledge that, that it was some really good things happening in the districts in preparation for us, I'm headed off. And also, I don't remember all the details, but I know Mr. Smith was telling us that the basketball team went down to Alabama and showed off in a good way. They really played well, and they had a good trip. I think that exposure to a different state, different group of people, opportunity to, you know, get out there, that's what we're here for. And so I'm glad that that took place as well. That's all I have.
All right. Thank you. Eight, Board Comments, and we will start with our newly sworn-in, Mr. Aaron Lumpkin.
I don't really have too much. The first thing that I want to do is, you know, thank the Trotwood community for providing this opportunity to represent you on the Trotwood Madison Board of Education. Anybody who knows me knows that one of the most important things to me is our students' development and the way that we represent our community going forward. I want to thank my family, my brother John, my mom's in the audience, my sister-in-law Nisa are here with me today. Not here noticeably is my father. My father passed away just about, it'll be nineteen years in September, but I know that Trotwood Madison was such a huge part of what he believed in, and giving back to the students. And I want to thank the students and how extraordinary they are. I was at some of those conferences. I volunteer with the football program a lot, and, you know, I travel and watch the basketball team. My nephew John plays on the freshman team. So we have a lot of gifted and talented students in Trotwood Madison, and we're looking forward to changing the narrative and, when time permits it, to challenge it as well. So the times for people to just say whatever they want to say about Trotwood Madison students and think that it's okay has come to an end. So thank you, guys.
Thank you.
All right, and now newly board member, Vice President, Deion Simmons.
So I am thrilled to be in this position. I think I've been just overwhelmed with the response that I've gotten from parents, the staff, the administration. So I am welcome to be in this seat. I look forward to all the work that we have to do that's ahead of us. Like Aaron, I definitely want the narrative to change. When outside people speak about Trotwood, I want it to be in a high regard, and I will be an ambassador and cheer us to that victory. I have my wonderful family, my three wonderful, two wonderful sons, and my nephew, all graduates of Trotwood City Schools, and all wonderful, something we're very proud of. I'm a Dayton Public School graduate, however, but they are Trotwood, and they bleed red, they bleed the Rams. So I am grateful to be in this seat and looking forward to working with all of the school board members here, looking for unison from us, so that we can come alongside and take this district to the next heights.
Thank you, Mr. Deion. And now, we have Mr. Sidney Davis, who's a sophomore, junior.
Yeah. Guess I don't need no theme music, but just thank y'all for all coming. I took it very serious, this job, and the only thing I kept thinking of today was the last of things. And I just think there's going to be a lot of last since you guys are here now. And that was it. I don't need to get great, great detail about all of the things that we've been through. But as a team, the last dance is the one I think about the most. Michael Jordan Netflix special kind of deal, and it just took so many different people to win, for real. Like, some was good at blocking, some couldn't shoot, but when you put them all together, they were winning six, seven, eight championships. And that's what I'm trying to do. I feel like I've coached, I've played, I've done everything I can in this life thing that we live. And one thing I want to do is just work with you guys more than ever. And hopefully, you guys can see that by my actions today and by my actions since you've met me in the last month or so. And again, just thank you, Madam Treasurer, for everything. Thank you, Madam Superintendent. Mr. Marlon Howard, thank you again for everything, and some of those Niesy talks I've had with you, thank you for that. Thank you for when I was ready to walk away, you found a way to kind of tell Ali to stop and get off the ropes. I think George had hit on you enough, it's time to come back, you know what I'm saying? And even now that we have a different thing, I can thank my union president now, now that the last of things has happened. So thank you for those times you've talked to me as well, when we were having hard times going back and forth with finding great communication between educators and admin. We found a way to do great things on TV when they were thinking we were just going to fight the whole time. And thank you for some of your officers that I probably told off in reference to kids. And one thing I would also like to say is thank you to the voters for what you guys did for me. You guys voted in some great people. Last thing I'll say is about my five-year-old Mason. I was trying to explain to him what this was, because a five-year-old's not understanding this. Madam Esquire, that is in the audience. And I explained to him like the Power Rangers. I said, I'm more like the green one that was always getting into stuff. He lost his power somewhere in there and then became the white ranger. I said, but this is our Red Ranger. Because he always hears her when I'm in the bathroom or just doing stuff and she's on speaker. And that's what he knows her as, the Red Ranger. So now she's our Red Ranger. And if he gets to watch this later, which he will, I want him to know that I'm next to the Red Ranger now, my leader. So Madam Cherry, just thank you for, like, I feel like we've been through a couple tours in a different, like, we got sent into the military or something in education. I didn't expect it to be this way. So just thank you for this, the fighting with me to just save our district with our superintendent, to give our district back to her in a way that was, to me, respectable to this lady. And I digress, just thank you guys for listening to all of that. As you can tell, I was in my feelings, but I'm out of them now. But I had, it took, I was in the past, for real, with that. But thank you guys so much. I appreciate it. Congratulations to our president, our vice chair, and our newly elected all officials. And hopefully, Madam Treasurer, you look at what we have now, and you realize that you need to stay just a little bit longer till we get somebody in here to just field those Cinderella glass slippers that we found in the boardroom back in the Treasury Department. Okay, we gotta, we need you to come back. And that's my elevator door pitch, is for wanting you to stay and celebrate now. I really just want to celebrate you guys today. I don't think I have a lot of thanking anybody other than you guys right now. And thank you for bringing your family. I think that's dope. I don't have a lot of family, so I'm kind of looking at that. So thank you again.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. How do I follow that? But I just want to say congratulations to Aaron and Deion once again. I look forward to working with the entire board. I look forward to working with the district, working collectively, learning new things. I always say, I've always been taught every day that you don't learn something is a wasted day. So I look forward to working together and moving our district forward. But I will like to say this, I've said this since day one, and if you've been watching the board meetings, you will know, we have to have changed the climate of Trotwood Board of Education. It starts with us. So I'm looking forward to working with everyone. Happy New Year. And I don't have any more comments. Oh, and I'm supposed to be doing something else? Okay, wait a minute. Okay.
One more thing, one more, one more thing to adjourn.
Adjourn.
A motion.
I'll take a motion to adjourn.
I'll make the motion to adjourn this meeting.
I'll second that.
It's been properly moved. Ms. Allen, would you please call the row?
Yes, Ms. Simmons?
Yes.
Mr. Lumpkin?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
And Mrs. Cherry?
Yes. Meeting adjourned.